United States of America, to be the representative for which it stands, one nation, America. In this, with the liberty and justice of our all.
Could we get roll call, please?
Vice Chair Vandalitas.
Here.
Secretary Laurent.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
President Norris.
Here.
Village Manager McClary.
Here.
Chairperson Zesnik requested to be excused. Have not heard from Commissioner Stable yet. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to excuse Chairman Zesnik? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item four on the agenda is approval of the agenda from our last meeting. The recommendation here is to approve the agenda for Monday, July 1st of the Planning Commission, regular meeting as presented. Is there any discussion?
We'll get the ball rolling. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Side. Okay, we have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item five is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. The meeting on June 3rd. The recommended, recommendation here is to approve the Planning Commission minute, meeting minutes as presented. Are there any questions about the meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the June 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission
Thank you.
uh, meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item number six, public comments of non-agenda items only. So this is the opportunity for anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission for non-agenda items. If there are any comments on agenda items, those will come, will have opportunity subsequent in the agenda. So is there anyone who would like to speak on non-agenda items? For the record, if you'd please state your name and address.
Yeah, Dewayne A. Decker, 397 North Shore Drive, Lake Orion. I'm 93. I'm having a little trouble hearing. So if you guys will speak up, I'd appreciate it. I'm having a little trouble hearing what went on here originally. And I may be on the agenda. I don't want to miss my turn. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission on non-agenda items? Okay, I'd like to move on to item number seven, old business. Is there any old business anybody would like to bring up? Okay, I'm going to move on to new business, item eight. So 8A is the monthly and planning, monthly planning and zoning report. So the recommendation here is to receive and forward to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Vandalitas. You have this report, so I'm just going to highlight some new developments.
So can you make sure you're speaking directly into the microphone, please?
Mr. Decker, can you hear me okay?
You're doing better than me.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I was listening.
All right, so as you know, you had planning and zoning training opportunity last month. This was attended by 22 people representing council, village staff, planning commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as the DDA. A PDF of the presentation is attached at the back of this report. And we look forward to providing additional in-house and external training opportunities for all of you in the coming months. We really, we really enjoyed that presentation. I hope you all found value in it for those of you that attended. And we'll send a recording of the virtual option, hopefully this week. The Township VSNA review and permitting process. We anticipate this to be launched early July. Had some issues connecting to their IT and getting things up and running, but I'm pretty confident that this is so close to being, to being launched. That's going to make permits, site plans, everything much more streamlined. So we look forward to that. The tax exempt parcels and village right-of-way inventory. We completed our cursory, I guess, compilation of all of these tax exempt parcels and village-owned property. We're going to be meeting with village staff to go over some of these recommendations before it comes back to you for some review and discussion at your August agenda. So this is, this is ready to go. We just need to make a few more refinements. The master plan, strategic action plan. We've also completed the draft of the matrix, so those are all of the action items that were compiled from past plans and engagement data. So again, we want to speak to staff and get their input before this goes on your agenda next month. Flipping to page two, I'm not sure of the page of your agenda packet, but we have our recently approved permits from the month of May and June. And I've also added a table for the variance request, so you can see what is being reviewed and approved by the BZA. All the active development projects, you see we have quite a few. I won't run through all of them, but if you have any questions on any of these projects, please let me know. As well as an update for the anticipated development projects, particularly Orion Lumber Yard. They are undergoing environmental investigations and developing a management strategy. That is a priority for them, and that work is underway. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive the monthly planning and zoning report for May and June 2024, dated June 26, 2024, and forward to the village council.
Second.
Okay, before we vote, are there any questions or comments anybody has on the, the report? Okay. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item 8B, site plan discussion on 44 East Flint Street, which is mixed-use development. So this topic, as I understand it, is for discussion only, so there is no, there would be no motion, no action taken by the Planning Commission. But for discussion only. So I guess I'm going to ask the applicant if there's a presentation we'd like to make.
Sure, thank you. Good evening. I'm Jeff Klett with Krieger Klett Architects, 400 East Lincoln in Royal Oak. I'm also here with the owner and developer, Mr. Jeff Schmitz of JS Capital, and his associate, Paul Dunn. Bear with me. I saw, I know it came up. It's on here. I don't think it was connected, though. Here we go.
And I'm going to just, quick reminder while you're getting that set up, to please speak into the microphone.
For sure. Let me, let me get a little closer here. I don't see it on the screen. Is there something I have to press on the? Oh, is there maybe a?
Maybe go to your Google and?
Is it in there, right?
Yeah, because it's your desktop showing.
Is that a dual screen by chance?
Not sure.
No, it's just a? Is there another way to plug in?
I mean, it's showing.
Maybe try unplugging the plug-in.
Like, get back in.
Maybe I'll close this.
Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. I know you don't want to stay here all night.
Tim is downstairs, so.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Same one.
Perhaps try.
Okay, I can do that. It's definitely the screen.
I could introduce the project and?
Do you, unless it works on another laptop, I have a drive I can share. I have a, I have a USB drive I can share if it's on there.
Did you guys experience this last time too? Anything else?
No, at what time?
Sure, right, it's not projecting. This is on, and this desktop shows it's just not.
This is helping. It's on my screen. Sorry about that. My apologies. It's on my screen. I swear. It's here. I have a few printed handouts. I could use these. I think they have them, Jeff.
Yeah, let's see if this works first. Oh, oh, there we go. That worked.
Okay. Very well.
Sorry about that. Thank you. So again, as you mentioned, we're not seeking formal approval tonight, but we'd just like your feedback, your guidance, and hopefully support for the project. So again, we're looking at a new mixed-use development at 44 East Flint. Am I speaking okay? Can you? Is it okay?
Very interesting, you know, the village, so I'd like to see in here what's going on. Quite the first time I ever met a rural, a mini village, so.
Well, thank you. So again, proposing a four-story mixed-use building at 44 East Flint. So that yellow rec, the yellow square on the screen represents the parcel itself. So we're bound by Flint Street, East Flint Street to the north. We have South Anderson to the right, Broadway, a block over to the left, and then, of course, we have Front Street. And then right behind this development, or this parcel, is the public parking lot, right to the south. So it'll consist of retail, office, and multifamily. The footprint's about 112 by 77 feet, about 8,600 square feet overall. So again, grade level consists about 3,500 square feet of retail right along East Flint Street. We have nine covered, I'll show you in another plan. We do have nine covered parking spaces behind the building. Then there's an additional 10 that are uncovered, so a total of 19 parking spaces to support the multifamily component, as the retail and office are not required to have parking in the DC district. Second floor will be all office space. That's about 6,500 square feet of pure office. And then the third and fourth floor will be multifamily apartments. There'll be five units per floor for a total of 10. And there'll be a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. I think we're predominantly two, as we're proposing now. These are just the views along Flint Street, so the top view is the view to the northwest along Flint. And then, of course, the, the bottom view is a view to the southwest, directly at our property. See the existing mature street trees, and then the open parking that it is right now. And then a handful of parallel parking spaces along both streets. I think I went the wrong way. Sorry, it's not my? There we go. I'll click this way. So this is our proposed site plan. A bit of a zoomed-in version of the original plan I showed you. So again, from a wayfinding standpoint, we have Flint to the top, and we have South Anderson on the right-hand side. So that, that darker gray shading, that represents the actual enclosed area. You know, we have, that's the, the retail component, as well as a small lobby for the, the multifamily. Directly behind that, to the south, is the parking. So you see that little nine circled right in this area? This is the covered parking spaces, and then we have the uncovered in the back. So the site's accessible along South Anderson Street, so you come down Anderson heading south, and you turn right into the development. So we have a 20-foot, 22-foot drive aisle, two-way drive aisle. You can turn right into the parking or turn left. I'd like to thank Mr. Buckle. We had, we had a good discussion with, with his team, as well as some of the consultants about the parking, maybe this is about a month ago. And we received some good feedback, which is also in the letter that they provided, and we responded to. So there was, we had more parking at one point. I think we were right parked. We had two, two spaces per unit. But there was discussion about making it safer. You know, can we have good vision triangles as we enter and exit the space? So we provided more green space along the right-of-way to do that. We also added more green space in the parking area to make it easier to back out of the spaces and to navigate. There's also a transformer that will be required for the development in the bottom right corner. So again, we, we have 19, 19 provided, 20 is required, but it seemed like that was a good trade-off to get, to make the site safer. There was also discussion along South Anderson. It's very tight in that right-of-way, and right now the parking is 90 degrees, and it's too tight. So what happens is there's only a five-foot sidewalk against the building. So it, it, those car over, the cars will overhang and accroche upon the sidewalks. So we're proposing to modify the right-of-way there to include angled parking spaces. That'll make it safer. We reduced the number on South Anderson, but we added two more, I believe, along Flint Street. So I think the net is, is, is about equal. So we're adding, we're losing on Anderson, but gaining on Flint. And then again, we're making it safer to, to enter the site. This is the, this is the public parking lot of the DDA lot to the south. So it was brought up by Mr. Gibb of the DDA that there is a severe need for a community trash enclosure in the area. So as a community benefit, the developer, Mr. Schmitz, is proposing a, to, to add, add this. So in that upper-left corner here, this would be a three-compartment trash enclosure. So it'll help service the community around us, and it'll also provide trash needs for, for our building as well, too. There, there's an adjacent wall that separates the, the two parcels right now, and there's a cut-through that'll allow the residents to, to access that enclosure to the backside. So that'll be a much-needed community benefit. I believe there's a loss of about four parking spaces, but we, we fit it to the corner tightly. It's pretty compact and allows it to be serviced easily, too. Now, there's one thing, too, I should have mentioned. At that, at that southern property boundary, there's an existing, I'm going to call it a knee wall. It's about a three-foot-high masonry wall with a cap. And it appears to be in good shape. You know, it, it does jog. I believe it's on the city property, then it's on our property. And there were some notes in the staff report about either replacing the wall to make it match the building. Right now, we're, because it is masonry, it's in good shape. We're, we're suggesting to keep it and maybe paint it to match our building. Again, that's something we can discuss down the road. But I wanted to bring that up to get your, your feedback on that as well. Oops. Again, not to bore you with the details, but it's our first-floor plan, so you can see the retail along Flint, about 3,500. There's a, a residential lobby is required along the predominant fronts. We do have a residential lobby for these guests to gain access. Then there's the various support pieces, riser rooms, mailrooms, elevators, stair towers, and then again, that covered parking space. Second floor, more of the same, just a big open office plan, 6,500 square feet. Same vertical circulation, stair towers. This is our third-floor plan. You can see we have two-bedroom apartments facing Flint, and then there's three to the back, so a pretty efficient building, double-loaded corridor. You can see we have more two beds than one in this layout. One of the nice features about the building to create some depth, as well as create nice, you know, balcony terrace areas, is we included terraces along the front. So there's a small sliver space, about 78 feet, along South Flint, and it wraps around the corner, too, which could be open balconies behind these big, you know, big arches that you'll see in the exterior renderings. The fourth floor is nearly identical from a layout standpoint, but it's a bit different from an optic standpoint. We understand the ordinance allows us to go up to 52 feet, which we comply with. But we also know we have to step the building back to create, to kind of break up the height and break up the massing. So this fourth floor appears to be different when you look at the renderings, which we'll show next, as it does step back. I guess I can bring it up now. There was a comment to, I think the ordinance requires that upper level to be stepped back 10 feet. We're still proposing eight, mainly to keep, keep all of our structural stacking. And it was a similar play over at 120 South Broadway, where we did receive a variance to make those eight feet versus 10 feet. And the eight feet's a, a good depth for, to get good seating out there, to make it a nice, comfortable balcony space, without taking up too much of the usable interior real estate. Oops, I keep using my mouse, and it's not my mouse or laptop. Cake sliced through the building. You can see along the left-hand side, you see those balconies that are right here. Balcony at the office level, balcony at the third-level apartments, and then the balcony above. And again, from a structural standpoint, all of these walls stack, so that's why we're proposing eight feet versus 10 feet. And also makes the units a bit larger inside. We think it, from a visual standpoint, it doesn't really change the impact on the street level. And then this is that covered parking at the back. Exterior renderings, this is a view that you'd see to the south of the facade along Flint Street. So again, it's, you know, fairly traditional, but also modern. Traditional from a material standpoint. We think it could fit in well to downtown. You know, beautiful brick, a nice stone base, you know, some nice intricate detailing, some beautiful, like, bold arches to create depth and illusion, some depth along the front of the building. We think it'd be very timeless and really fit the streetscape. So that, those, those balconies add a lot of depth to the front of the building, too. So you can kind of see how they interact with that front facade. This is that upper level, the fourth floor. You can see that's stepped back as well, too. So the building, you know, from a street-level standpoint, appears to be three-story. And we did that through stepping it back. Also, a change in material helps to create that illusion as well. So we don't think it's overpowering or too tall in, for the area. Other views, again, this just suggests, oops, this just suggests materials. Again, high-quality, durable, timeless materials. It's probably 90% brick and limes, brick at the upper levels, and then limestone at the base. We're proposing high-quality metal panels at the upper levels. And that's showing here 52 feet to the top, and then the eight-foot, eight-foot-deep terraces. Other metal details and accents, as well, the balconies. This is a view along, one of the early, this was very helpful working with, with Gage and his team. We were, we, the, the facade on this was a bit more blank, so with discussions in his team, we edit, we articulated the site a bit more, and I think it relates better to the East Flint Street side. So we're, we're kind of proud of this one shook out. We carry the archways around, and in the middle here is one of the stair towers that leads up the building, so that could be glass, and it helps to break up that facade a bit. So just continuity materials and keeping the design consistent around the building versus one-sided only. This is the backside of the building. You can see the covered parking. We stacked all the, all the windows up above. Same materials. The one challenge would be the right-hand side. That would be the western side of the building, because we are a zero-lot-line condition, which means we can't place windows. It's a fire-rated wall. So kind of like 120 South Broadway, where they have the dragon mural on the building. It's a similar feature, where it's a rated wall, so we really can't add windows. But one of the comments came back to, you know, add some articulation. Don't just make it a, a block wall. Don't just make it a block wall. So our initial concept is to create some relief with brick, recessing the brick in. Or maybe we can do this through, through masonry, but we want to step it, to at least carry that motif of those windows around the building. And still some of the detail, we can carry those. It's, it's hard to see here on the screen, but there's some banding around the building. We can change the, the way the brick is coursed out, like a running bond pattern. We can switch to a soldier course where they're more vertically oriented and wrap that banding. It's more like belt and suspenders all the way around the building to make it cohesive. Again, another view along the sidewalk. You can see some of that articulation of the deep canopies, you know, creating nice, nice shadows across the building. A lot of glazing at the street level to make that really interactive and very pedestrian-friendly. Nice signage band. Again, just a detail of the signage band in the front. Some beautiful light fixtures, some planters to interact with the street trees. This, this diagram here just shows there is a requirement for the percentage of glazing around the building. And I think we're just off 1%. I think it's 30% is required and we're at 29. So as we develop the design, if it's a requirement to, to match that exactly, I think we can achieve it. It seems like we can adjust windows slightly here to get to that 30%. But there's, you know, a ton of glass here, as you can see, across the, the two facades. And then lastly, I just want to react to some of the, the comments that we received in the letters. So we did provide a response. I'm not sure if you had, I know we submitted fairly late, so I'm not sure if you had a chance to review those. But we did receive the letters from McKenna Associates, Nuak &amp; Fraus, and Fire Marshall. And I think we can comply with nearly 95% of those. There's just a handful that we'd like your feedback on tonight. So I already, I probably already mentioned some of these, but, so I'm gonna go, I'll go through these quickly, too. So number one was the fourth-floor walls, fronting Flint Street are shown to be stepped back seven feet from the front building line. As I mentioned, the ordinance requires 10. We're suggesting seven, it's in the seven-to-eight-foot range, and we'll dial that in next time we submit. Just to, because two more feet just takes away from those apartments even more. We have limited depth to make sure our parking works, maneuvering lanes work, and then the other road parking works. So we feel eight feet still meets the spirit of the ordinance and still provides a good, a good, you know, balcony space and step back from the street. The second one up here, we already mentioned this, too. The side's facing Anderson Street. She'll have the same level of, level of articulation. We hope that that could suffice to, to provide some brick detailing to help break that up a little bit as we can't add windows. Number three, it's really a comment about the limestone banding at the base. If I go back to that rendering, I can, in a minute, we're showing about a four-foot-high belt of limestone around the base of the building. And I believe the, the comment is that it's too close in color to the brick that we selected, at least for the renderings. And we'll make sure, next time we come in front of you, we'll bring sample boards, material boards to show that contrast. And we're confident that we can come up with a nice composition of materials that, that looks beautiful and timeless and meets, you know, the intent of the city as well as the developer. We did address these, too. These are, these are more related to the site plan. So the last, or the fourth one here is vehicular access. And I'm just gonna read it, it's long here, but it says vehicular access to the site is provided by a two-way, 22-foot drive. What the, what the comment really said is it is recommended that these two, I should read it all, leading to the, leading to the off-street residential parking, clear vision egress will be obstructed by the on-street parking to the south. So the parking on Anderson, they said, would be obstructed due to that drive. So it is recommended that these two parking spaces be replaced with a curved right-of-way landscape bed with additional street tree to create a defined access point, promote clear vision, and assist with stormwater management enhance the area. And then it goes on to say that, it's really a swap-off. We're adding two more along Flint, but we're taking two along Anderson. So we did agree with those comments and felt that that was for the betterment of the site, the development, and public safety. So again, that was that site plan change. And then I think the last one had to do with, with the parking spaces. When we had the discussion with the city team or the village team, we was, we, we were working on a site plan over the phone and we were talking about adding landscape within the parking lot. And we thought we were gonna lose more parking spaces. We had 20 per our sketches and comments. We thought we were gonna lose more. But based on our understanding or interpretation of that conversation, we lost one space and still provided the greenery within the parking lot itself. So again, we're one space shy, but we think it's a good offset. And again, we'll work with the city staff and their team, village staff and their team to really define that parking lot and dial it in. As right now, we have our, our civil engineers working on those plans, too. These are architectural site plans. They're a bit looser. But when we submit for final site plan approval, we'll make sure those are dialed in and tightened up. So I believe in a long-window way, that's, that's about it. So again, more than happy to answer any of your questions and looking for any, any thoughts, comments, and more than happy to react to that with our next submittal. So thank you for your time.
So I think, I appreciate your, your presentation here. I think before we ask questions and whatnot, I think I'd like to ask Gage. I know that you prepared a report. If you'd like to go through that, some of the questions might be answered by going through that. And then I think we can do the comments, we'll do the public comments, and then any questions the commission might have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna fully repeat the introduction. I think you got a good flavor for this building. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful development. As you can see, they've made some really great changes to respond to a lot of our comments from our initial staff review. I just want to, to note a couple of things. I'll, I'll be flipping through my review, the McKenna letter. I'm just kind of reviewing kind of my notes as I, as I, as I heard their presentation. For, as far as use and harmonious design, they note that they will comply and meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. We, we feel that that will be addressed appropriately in the next submittal. They are working on that full site plan and civil engineering plan. So as far as required information, we believe that will be met. Regarding the dimensional standards, that's item three. The height overlay district, in order to allow for that fourth story, that 52 feet, they have to step back that fourth-floor 10 feet. As they had mentioned, potentially receiving a variance. I always shy away from having a variance be a condition of approval. Variances are not guaranteed. They really need to relate to the site itself, any particular restrictions from that site. This is purely kind of a, a design decision and it's, it might be hard to argue the seven feet, but we would recommend that they push for design alternatives for that 10-foot step back for that fourth story as it's required. Yep?
I have a question. And clearly, I can see the intent of that setback on the visual lines of the building. What is the exact purpose of the 10 feet? In other words, the differential between 7.5 and 10, what is the intent of the 10-foot setback?
The intent of that 10-foot setback is to minimize that appearance of that fourth story as much as possible. This is a quaint downtown. This is a large building. It's taking up as much of that corner as it can, and that's great. But that 10 feet would accomplish not only meeting the ordinance standard, which is a requirement for that height overlay, but just minimizing the impact of this four-story building where it's adjacent to many two-story, three-story, and shorter residential structures across the street as well. We believe it would be more compatible with the surrounding properties.
Is that some type of industry standard that they feel like 10 feet is, creates that?
That, that's a good question. The height overlay district, I believe, was included in the 2010 zoning ordinance update, if I'm not mistaken. I'll have to double-check where they may have gotten that information, but that is just a, an ordinance requirement.
I do like the, by using the dark colors and the exterior poles, it gives a greater sense of setback, that contrast, so.
I would agree with that in the overall, in the concept and the feel of it. I think that it does accomplish the intent of the ordinance, but as it's being proposed, they would need to request some sort of a variance. And as, as you know, variances are not guaranteed. I just like to, to point that out. So moving, moving on, if you don't mind, they have taken our comments as far as blank facades and adding articulation and windows where they can. We think that those recessed or revealed brick modulations would maybe be great insets for future murals. That was just a thought I had while they were presenting. But I think they've done as much as they can with the building facades to meet the ordinance standards. The discernible base and cap issue that Mr. Clapp highlighted, the limestone base being white, off-white, that brick also being similarly light-colored, it doesn't appear to differentiate as much, and it could just be an issue with the rendering. But we would encourage warmer brick to match a lot of the surrounding buildings, which are, you know, historical, of course, just by the fact of their existence. But including a warmer-toned brick would just kind of blend this building in. So it's not so, so much of a contrast with the surrounding buildings. Detailing, more horizontal banding, that would be more visible. Very supportive of different coursework with the brick. This is, you know, something that will come before you once again for materials and color selection. So that's our recommendation to, to kind of help it be more cohesive with its surroundings. Let's see here. Landscaping and screening. Again, we, we recommended and had discussed with the applicant to provide some right-of-way landscaping, modifying the parking to be angled, and trying to make that more of a cohesive streetscape with that DDA parking lot to the south. They have landscape islands in the right-of-way. We think it's a great opportunity to continue that. So we fully support those modifications. They would require a license agreement with village council just because it's public property. But we do appreciate their attention to detail there. We think it'll be safer eliminating those parking spots right to the south of the entrance drive. If a car's parked 90 degrees, you know, that's gonna block the view of someone coming out of driveway. So we think that's a good solution. Again, well, the transformer screening, they mentioned leaving it open to the north. It will still be visible from Anderson Street. We think, you know, as far as screening to the maximum extent possible, provided the planning commission finds it acceptable, we would say that that's okay. So we're willing to work with them on that. They are, they are providing, again, that pedestrian connectivity, making it a little bit safer along Anderson Street. Parking and loading, this, this was a potential, not an issue, it's just something for discussion that reducing the requirement by one space and also waiving the requirement for a loading space. We think that this is a well-developed site, relatively less intense uses as far as loading might go and unloading. So we would recommend waiving that requirement in the future. And of course, with trash, some sort of agreement would need to be in place with the DDA to incorporate that, you know, that three receptacle proposal. We think it's great. We think it's a mutually beneficial solution. Went through all the, all the architectural details already. We think they've done a great job. Again, this is a beautiful building. We would just like to see those step backs be compliant. That window percentage transparency requirement, we'd like to see that as well. Transformer, we agreed, or we, I discussed that we'd be okay with them leaving it open to the north and parking, loading, and lighting. It's a little bright at the property line on Flint Street. We do think that we should waive that being it's the downtown. Having lighting along Flint Street is important. But certainly along Anderson Street, they mentioned that they would explore different lighting to reduce any pollution facing residential properties to the, to the east. Other than that, I think they did a great job with their presentation. I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Should we go to public comments?
I gotta go.
And should we do that before public comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on, on the external lighting, I get it especially to the east because you have residential, but that's one of the highest, I thought my time was up. That was one of the highest, that's one of the highest pedestrian crossings in the entire community is right there. So the more light in that corner, I think, is actually a safety bonus. I, I do love the, using the arches to take away from the optics that it's a four-story along the setback. I would defy a lot of people to look at that and say it's a four-story building. It's beautiful. And the other thing, I was just curious, is I like the architectural color contrast here in the stone and in the brick. And I was wondering if we could get, I, I kind of like that. I not, I understand, you know, the blending and keeping everything in its similar eye line, but sometimes it's also pleasant to kind of begin to move with new buildings to have a little different look. Could we get this in a way that incorporates the other buildings down there so we can see how this looks? Because I mean, personally, can we overlay that with the existing structures? I mean, I, I kind of like the colors you have selected, if it's not so overly offensive when compared to the others.
It's actually a great idea. Yeah, we can do an aerial overlay. We can do, it's almost like a photo match. We can show the existing, an aerial view showing maybe right down Flint Street.
Kind of a west street view and then from a side looking north.
That's a great idea.
And that would capture between the west view and a north view, you're gonna get all of the brick in that area. But it's, it's, for lack of another term, it's kind of refreshing.
Great idea. Yeah, we can definitely include a handful of aerial views that show it right in context with the surrounding buildings. And that's our goal, too. You know, we, we think it should be of its own time. But again, too, we want to be respectful of the character that the down, the downtown's gorgeous. We want to make sure that we can respect that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Layman?
Thank you, George. Gage, I had a question or two for you.
Yes, please.
The, um, the loading, I didn't quite understand. I read the report and it said you were looking for some, reducing the loading zone, maybe making it half the size. There's moving trucks, tenants, and I understand it's not really like a party stores and stuff, so there's not daily delivery trucks. But there are gonna be, you know, moving trucks occasionally and retail deliveries. Where do they, where do they deliver?
Yeah.
The streets are usually crowded with cars, and where does the truck park to deliver? It's important. I-
It is important, and I really wanted, really wanted that discussion with the planning commission as well. One, 10 by 50 spaces required. Don't think that they will have a semi-truck, but you never know. We are unsure of the tenants at this time. However, for, you know, this sort of retail space, office space, we feel that a 10 by 25 loading space would be more appropriate or a waiver entirely from the loading requirement.
So my question, Gage, was where would the delivery trucks park? It's not whether the waiver or the size. There will be a truck. It will park in the middle of Flint Street, in the middle of Anderson Street, in the middle of the public parking lot, underneath the building. The other buildings in the area, a lot of them have like an adjoining parking lot alley thing. Like, I know that Johnny Black's has no, or the, the store on the corner with the, with the costumes. They don't have any delivery spaces, right? They have a public, a private parking lot or a public street to deliver on. So the condition then that you're proposing is for the delivery vehicles to attempt to find space on the public street, like the other people in the community.
We think the maneuvering lane behind the building could suffice for parking. It's ideal that it does not block-
Professional response, so.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So you're thinking they can park in the middle, they can deliver in the middle of the common parking areas, back in there and block that up for a little while?
I, as far as public safety goes, that probably would not be recommended. We, they could theoretically fit a 10 by 25 loading space if they got a further reduction of, of parking there. And we would recommend reducing the parking more to 1.5 per dwelling unit for a total of 15. That would free up four more spaces and allow for a loading space in, in that, in that back parking lot with- back parking lot without blocking additional, or without blocking private parking.
So you're talking about the ten spaces that are not covered?
Yes, that or any of the covered spaces, given that they have those columns, it could provide a little bit more room for unloading, but I would potentially, at the next meeting, if it's a condition-
Well, I'd like to throw out an idea, and I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Lam, but- Let me finish with him and then I'll, I, did, so, so you're proposing to waive the loading requirement? Have we waived the loading requirement for any of the other new buildings in town? Do we have any new buildings in town? There's one new building that was built, a four-story on the river, does that have a loading area?
We don't have it, I don't think we have it, that's one twenty South Broadway, the one I mentioned. Similar case, we have parking behind the building, I don't think we have a dedicated loading zone, we have-
On the side there by the bike shop, isn't that a little loading area there? The tenants used to complain in the apartment building about the parking and the loads, so I don't know.
Yeah, I could probably pull up an area, but I don't think we have dedicated loading there, I remember that coming up too, and then Jeff Schmitz also owns a development the other side of the creek, which is being renovated right now, and that's all retail or whatever it may turn into, and we don't, same thing, there's those existing parking spaces on the, on the right-hand side of the building, then the streets, so there's no dedicated loading there either. So, this could, this could be a case too, with only ten residential units, I mean, could we, if there, if, I understand your point about a moving truck coming in, but could those be staged at certain hours or try to figure out at a time that's more convenient to do that? And then day-to-day, are there more box trucks, Amazon trucks, things like that that are making, I don't see semis approaching the building or anything like that.
I, I don't either, but as I said, where, where do the, you know, Amazon trucks park? I just asked the question, where do these vehicles go? So they stop in the middle of the street, so when you're, you're going to be taking deliveries, other than Amazon, you run in, run out, blah, 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 but I just, it's a valid question.
No, it definitely is, yeah, it could be the on-street spaces if they're available, or do they pull in, or that's a, that's a great point too, we'd hate to lose parking because it's always desired, and I know it's, it's a challenge to pick that up.
The village is, is really disappointing on a lot of issues, so I have another question on, on a different matter than, the, the common dumpster concept in the adjoining parking lots, that would require a, you know, legal agreement with the actual property owner with perpetual lease or perpetual right to operate and maintain the dumpster with a enforcement clauses so that the court could, you know, force them to do stuff. Who actually owns that parking lot? We had some talk about that in the past, who owned the parking lot, there are some serious restrictions on the use of the parking lot, you know, some agreements, documents and things, do you actually know who owns the parking lot?
Parking lot is owned by the DDA, and they have been in discussions with the architect and myself conceptually to provide that shared dumpster space.
So I, very much, that's one thing I would really think the village attorney should, should get in on early before we get into the, remember the, the owner, previous owner, and there were deed restrictions and ownership restrictions and, you know, it's a non-parking use and it reduces parking spaces, so the, the whole thing reduces parking spaces.
I would agree with that.
All your proposals are reducing parking spaces.
Yeah.
So we've gone from parking to reducing parking, that's all the questions I have.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I got a couple of comments on it. So, traditionally in a village downtown street, and Mr. McClary can opine if I'm incorrect, but we don't have designated parking, and the on-street becomes the parking, and the loading zones in the village have historically been the street. Now, this is a little different because as stated, you have residential units, so you're going to have those coming in, but a loading zone is lawful in an on-street in the downtown district, and that's, if, if you look downtown, that's what happens, they try to find the parking. So, one of the things I was looking at here is, and I'm not sure on the landscape, but my computer's got everything way too big, but on South Anderson Street, the vacated parking spaces that are along there, I'm not sure how much and how far out from the building to the east the landscaping was going to go with, and, and this is again in trying to configure how you could bring in a moving van and do this, is you would have to have a requirement that there would be a, someone to assist with traffic. The purpose of eliminating those was to get people out safely onto Anderson, but that could be a loading/unloading zone if the caveat was there was an individual to a spot, right? That, not marked or designated as such, but it, those spaces would make the, the least intrusive than blocking a Flint Street. The, the number-one concern was visual safety and getting people out, so if there was a traffic assist on doing that when they brought that van in, if it's a two-person, one would, you know, that's probably the most useful space for everything, including side pull-off if they were more to the north for your Amazon trucks and other things like that. Those were just my only comments, but that, that space is probably the least amount of traffic flow, yeah, there's a public safety sightline issue there, but that could be alleviated with a two-person truck.
Right, and, you know, it's not going to be occupied all the time, so it's mostly going to be clear, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, if it was, like, right here, it looks like it's about if we take an average parking space of twenty feet, and then the walkway here, then another twenty feet, it's probably forty, forty-five feet.
You've got plenty of room.
Maybe it's striped or, or something, it's loading only, and I love the green space idea, but maybe that makes sense from a safety standpoint, great, great thought.
Well, and you, you could probably do some narrow green space, the far western, eastern border of the wall there, and it's still, because Anderson Street right there is, it's fairly wide, and the truck wouldn't extend that far out, you could, I think you could do both.
Like a narrow strip of landscaping and-
A very, a very narrow strip with like a, the same type of material that the building is made of with greenery on the top of that.
Yeah.
And then low enough that as you approach the exit entrance, it's not a sightline, you're, you're set back far enough, I think, for the sightline violation for that, but then that could be a designated loading/unloading zone.
Yeah.
And just with, you know, you would need a flagger, two-person truck.
Great thought.
Yeah, that, that would be something to propose to council.
Can, can loading zones be parking zones at different times of the day? I mean, if, if you schedule, you know, if, if they do it right and schedule them when they have to be there, then that would free those parking zones up for later in the day.
The only hard part about that just being practicality is-
Yeah, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, is, it would be, if I came to you and said, when is someone not going to be in your driveway? You know, the hard part is, is you don't know when the occupants are going to be coming or going or having guests, and that's the hard part, you get it three AM, but it could be full, and then at four PM it's empty, and then the next day at four PM it's full and three AM it's empty, it's, there's no predictability to use, that's the hard part.
Yeah, that's why I guess.
Yeah.
I, I just hate for a loading zone to be, a loading zone and then be empty for the whole evening traffic.
There is a loading zone along Flint currently, where they're proposing, I think, one or two additional on-street parking spaces, so it's either, either retaining that or moving it to Anderson Street, could be a solution.
Yeah, Flint is so much higher in volume of traffic and pedestrian, Anderson, that, that spot of Anderson isn't nearly as high in vehicle, and even your cross and turning traffic there isn't as high, so Anderson, I just think is a, a safer, quieter.
Yeah. Okay, any other commissioner comments or questions? Okay, I, I have a couple. The nineteen spaces, are those nineteen, is, is that going to be gated so to, to restrict those nineteen spaces for residents' use, or will there be some jockeying, so to speak, between residents and anybody in the downtown area finding those to be fair game?
Yeah, I think, I think the intent is they'd be for the private development for the residential use, even the office users won't be able to have, won't have access to those spaces in the same building or the retail.
But when you say they won't have access, does that mean it'll be gated so that it'll control that access? Because otherwise, it's, it's, it's open, open parking.
That's a great, I don't think we can gate it, just-
Right, we could signage, and they won't tow, tow them away, we have signage up for residents only.
So if I could jump in on that, so we've got that, all of your apartment buildings downtown, you know, people going, Michigan law requires one sign at the entrance, at each entrance, so they've got one entrance, and it just, basically the sign has to state, private parking, tenants only, tow-away zone, then you have to list the phone number of the local towing company, and as long as you do that on one sign coming in, basically you don't even have, you don't even have to call the police, the individual people can come out and a manager, an on-site manager just calls the tow truck, they come take it away. The police show up just to make sure it's not stolen, but it's, once those signs are up under the Michigan van vehicle act, anybody that parks it, and people learn pretty quick because they get their cars towed all the time, that happens often, so it's, it's effective, I mean, all the little plazas that we have, people try to sneak the car in there all the time and they call, happens every day.
It's not inexpensive to get your car back.
No.
So, so the other question or comment that I would have is also relative to parking, this area used to be a parking lot, I believe, so the, the village itself is losing that We don't meet the requirement of two spaces per unit, and so if we go to nineteen, then it's kind of close, but we're also, there, there's verbiage in here about, you know, even reducing that to a one-point-five per unit as opposed to two per unit, which would bring that down even more. The trash enclosure is another four parking places in the other lot, and, and my concern is probably a little bigger picture, the parking is an issue in the village, and to continually restrict parking or reduce parking, available parking, in my mind is directionally incorrect, and so I would be looking for just the opposite, I would be looking for, how do I get the twenty spaces? I would be looking for, if I'm going to lose four for a trash enclosure, where do I get those four back? Because parking is an issue, it, it comes up in council meetings, it comes up in our planning commission meetings, it is, you know, it's a constant discussion point in the village.
George, part of the DDA's project at the lumberyard is to supply about a hundred and fifty parking spots, we currently have gone in there and laid out, I don't know what they call it, they're parking over there now, and actually, when, if you looked at, if you're downtown on the first-
Yeah, I parked there for the two of you.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that's just the beginning of what can happen over there, so I, I don't disagree with you, I think keeping as close to two as possible is, is good, but we're also going to pick up a hundred and fifty spots towed.
And one more comment if I may, when we did our last professional engineering study, parking study, we did that with the, we pulled all of these parking spaces out, so the last engineering study that we did for council, and if you, if you look in the engine, the, the report back, it pulled these spaces out, because that was anticipated, it was no longer going to be public parking, but the additional, that's what, that's part of what brought us to the eighty-fifth, actually closer to the ninetieth percentile on parking saturation, which then triggered, we got to do something, and that was part and parcel of the purchase of the lumberyard property, and that hundred and fifty spaces takes us way down back in our parking. But this was anticipated three years ago that that was going to be pulled out.
And Mr. Chairman, let's remember that we have the Slater Street parking lot right across the street that is never used, I mean, we have like twenty-six parking spaces in that parking lot, and every time I've driven by there, there's been a maximum of one vehicle in that parking lot, so that parking lot is virtually empty, and it's just walking across the street and then down, down a little sidewalk to get to that parking lot. I, I don't think reducing the parking requirements for this development is as much of an issue as we might think it is.
And just another note, I think putting this building there as opposed to a parking lot that was makes all kinds of sense for downtown.
Agree.
In fact, the one thing that we have been seeing too with a lot of our newer developments is a lot of the ordinances are a bit outdated from a parking standpoint, we're seeing one-point-five is common for multifamily, even one-point-three, one-point-two, and a lot of, you can also look at it from a bedroom standpoint, two beds versus one bed, is it one space per bed, and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Belko is in a better position, yes, he sees more developments than I do when it comes to modern parking standards, and a lot of communities are in the same boat and, you know, changing a bit to, to, to react to more modern conditions.
I, I, I think getting the nineteen there because there, there was a proposal for that space in the past, which had more residents and couldn't meet the parking, and that project fell apart.
Gage, just quickly, the proposal meets parking?
The proposal is one space short of the two per dwelling unit that is required, but it is well within the planning commission's ability to waive or reduce parking requirements.
Because it's only one?
Because it's only one.
Okay.
And if I may, how many one-bedroom units are there versus two?
I, I think we have, I think there is eight and two, let me double-check here real quick.
Eight two-bedroom?
Yeah, eight two-bedrooms and two-
Two one-bedrooms.
I mean, this is, this plan isn't final, always subject to market conditions, but there's not enough space here to really make five two-bedrooms, so, you know, based on this, I'd be comfortable with eight and two.
Yeah.
So, if you did, if that, you know, that's sixteen, eighteen spaces if you count beds, which is another way to look at it too.
I have a question, JS Capital's moved their office up to Lake Orion on the second floor, and we want to know if we could have the option with our approval to eliminate the third-floor apartments and have that as office with one approval.
Say that again?
We're going to move our office up to the second floor, JS Capital, relocate. As the market changes, we want to know if we have the option to eliminate the five-bedroom apartments, the five units on the third floor to all office space.
Does you think it might be more space in the future?
Correct.
So that would reduce then the parking requirement?
Yeah, we just want to know if we can do that with one approval, just have that option, you can write it up that way, or?
Well, and then another idea I just want to throw out there for everybody here is going back to the South Anderson Street, if you look at the farther north, you got one, two, three, four, five parking spots as you approach Flint Street, then we got the bump out there. So, the far northern single parking spot, if, and I'm trying to think, I think it's twenty-five feet or twenty feet is our sightline restriction, Mr. McClary, clear vision?
I'm sorry.
For clear vision, it's, I think, twenty feet, you're going to exceed that if you had one remaining parking spot, I know it's, it's on the public right-of-way, but if we're going to re-license that to a loading zone, one spot, that northernmost spot would not be a sightline restriction, just saying. And then the other one, two, three, four spots, and where it approaches into the driveway there, you got a little more line beyond that, when you get to the first parking space, that would still fit a delivery, anyway.
Okay, are there any, any other commissioner comments or questions? Okay, then I'll open it up to any public comments on this agenda item.
Hello, I'm John Burfley, one-five-two South Andrews. One question is a clarification that I'd like to ask on Mr. Clapp, and then I'd also like to comment on Mr. Lawrence's suggestion, if you could just scroll upwards on this map a little bit more on the shared loading zone, if you could scroll where I can see that. That loading zone is kind of cool, because it can service other businesses in the area as well, not just that apartment building. And if it were to be, and I've seen them many times, one of those loading zones that has restricted use, like from 8 to 12, it's loading zone, and then you could park there, that'd be a great way to keep it, because what I keep wondering about is, is with those bumpouts, turning radius, if a large truck were to come down Anderson Street, I think it would be difficult for them, where they could just come up on Flint Street and then ease back out, and/or if they go down Anderson Street, then they have to turn down at front in Anderson, and then those same bumpouts become hindrances over at Flint and front. And that, those trucks will have to do a big wide swing and go into the other lane, and I think that's not good for safety's sake. So I would encourage to continue to look at the possibility of that loading zone that can service other businesses in the area, plus be right there available for any retail they do on that first floor. A map you have, sir, that showed the two bedrooms and the one bedroom?
Let me zoom out just a, just a touch.
The outdoor terrace on your renderings shows that it goes all the way Flint Street from what I could see, and all the way on Anderson. It's not that case here, because that one bedroom goes all the way to the wall. So there's no outdoor terrace on Anderson's side, on the southern portion of that building.
Correct, it's only in this area. This is that one archway.
If you look at your renderings though, that's my point, your renderings aren't accurate to the drawing, to what I thought I saw. Example right there, that, up there where it says brick and the arrow comes down, that's a flush wall, is it not? It's not set back eight foot.
This one's set back, and this is set back right here.
Go to the very upper left portion of the building.
The upper level?
Yep, might go far to the left.
This one, yeah, this one is...
That's set back.
This one is not, no, this is not set back. Just for the continuity, we, we wrap the corner with the balconies here, but this is true. So at the, if that's, if that was a third floor, fourth floor, maybe correct that this doesn't turn.
It showed on the other one that there's a setback there to the metal panels, and then no setback in the other portion. That's what it showed.
Yeah, that, well, yeah, that's...
So, and then, to me, indicates right there that there's a setback all the way, but I just thought it was incorrect.
It may be the case up on the upper level, if that plan is inaccurate, but levels, yeah, if I jump back, let me see here.
Because if you look at the far corner, you've got that, well, anyways, there's other things. That's my only two comments, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, third floor has a... Are there any other public comments? Okay, so this was for discussion only, there's no expected or anticipated action. Thank you very much for the, for the discussion, the presentation. Okay, moving on to number nine, commissioners' comments regarding the planning and zoning matters. Darwin, if we can start with you, please. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe I have any comments to make, other than, today is the start of our new fiscal year, our budget's been adopted. I'm a little concerned about the DDA, because I'm not sure that they've given final approval to, final adoption of their budget. I had communications with, with Mr. Gibbs last week, but I'm not aware that the DDA has taken any action on their budget. But the village's budget has been adopted, and, and we start our new fiscal year today. Gage and I are, are talking about some projects that, that the village is working on. We're getting, McKenna has made great strides in working on the village's property inventory. We anticipate maybe later this month, or in early August, to be able to present something to the council on the inventory that was done. That is one step in a process, because the council wanted to get a good handle on all of the properties that we own, all of the public properties, and then we will be doing site inspections to determine what improvements have been made on village properties without council approval, and then council will be having discussions on what, if any enforcement actions, the council would like to take as a result of this study and mapping. We will be mapping all these properties in our GIS system, and so very soon, we will have a much better understanding of all of the properties that we own, and what actions we need to take to make sure that we're bringing all of those into compliance with council approvals for any improvements that are made. Also, as Gage mentioned earlier, he is working on the master plan, strategic action plan, and we will be meeting a little bit later administratively to go over the proposed action plan, and then that will be coming back to the planning commission for your review and further input. So, those are all the items I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
The only thing I have is, I agree with you on trying to keep it as best we can at two, even though we're going to have more parking in downtown.
Thank you. Mike?
Okay. Just, again, I, I'm really excited about this. I was thinking back, as this was here, I, I responded to and have been in the apartments that existed there before, and it was the Orion Pet Center. And I know there was always people that are going to say, "There was the history, what is Lake Orion, and the architecture, and the type of buildings," but in 1950, when those were built, there were people that said, "You know, we don't need that stuff, you know, and it's too modern, it's too this." This is a beautiful building, I love the architecture, it takes away from the concept that it's four stories, everything they've done architecturally. I, I just, I think it's really cool, and it, it still fits a need, there's always been residential there, it's right on the edge of the residential, yet commercial. And I, I, I think for the value of that building over the ugly parking lot that we've always had, we've gained that parking and then some, and we're not using, I've noticed that as well, our Slater Street, I think we can advertise that a little better, public parking, or some more signage, but that's, that's been underused, we've got the available parking, and the advantage of having that, I think, is tremendous. I think there's nothing here, I don't see anything here that we can't resolve, to have a beautiful building in our downtown.
Michael?
George, I agree with you on, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and the parking situation is, it's always been a big deal, and though magically it's, it's been resolved somehow, it doesn't really matter. The, the guy's building looks nice. If you go downtown and you look at our facades versus like Oxford or something, where the, Oxford has a very cognizant, cohesive facade program. They've got old buildings, they fix them up with new signs and new facades, they look nice. Our downtown doesn't look particularly attractive at all. There's lots of pretty flower baskets in the streets, but the buildings themselves are, for the most part, old and ugly. So I'm, you know, I would say I'm encouraging, you know, anyone who wants to put a new building up that's attractive to, to do so, you know, within their rights as, as a property owner. That's important. I, I don't think, I don't think really the, you know, the, the looks need to be, you know, beat down on, I think if it's a nice-looking building, it can stand on its own, stand on its own character. Our downtown doesn't really have any flavor, or texture, or congruency, you know, so I would, I would think the least of our worries would be what the, what the building looks like. I think just the functionality, the presence, it'd be nice to have a, another business in the, in the community to be, nice to have some more residents to vote, you know. The retail, don't know what they would put in, but surely someone would like to have another shop. So it's a very positive-looking development, and since the parking didn't exist on that property, you know, before, it was a private, private business, I don't think it's going to take away. But I, I don't want to set a precedence for, I do see the movement towards the Royal Oak of, of the village, Lake Orion. Okay, redevelopment-ready community program with the state, the DDA's, you know, wanting, you know, redevelopment. I, redevelopment leads to very, very high-density residential. We've already seen that happen with Mosheri all along the lakefront, and they will transition to downtown into, you know, four stories throughout, high-density. Maybe the DDA will put that, get that big parking garage over there to help out, but I, I don't see a problem with it. That's, that's where we're headed. We're headed to Royal Oakville, and I'm sad to see it.
Okay. I too think the, the building, what they proposed here, I think looks, I think looks good, and I think it'll be, will be an add. Gage, I wanted to compliment you on the training, you kind of breezed through that very quickly at the beginning, but I found that very valuable, and time was spent.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I wished I could have done it live, but I had another engagement that evening, but I did do it virtual, and, and I appreciate it. A question that I have, the building that's to the north of the American Legion, it looks like they're gutting that building, and I, I, I'm probably wrong, but I seem to remember that being a facade change, not a gutting of the building.
So the, the reason it came before the planning commission was, they are proposing structural changes and interior whiteboxing for new tenants. It was part of the proposal to kind of demo that facade, but also restructure the interior. Yeah, I'm happy to, to talk more about that project and kind of what they're planning, but that is kind of how we anticipated it going forward.
Okay, so it's going according to plan?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification on that, so the reason it came to the planning commission is because any exterior modifications are subject to planning commission review and approval. Interior modifications are building issues, correct?
They are building issues. Whenever we have a change of tenancy, a change of occupancy or use, if they're proposing structural changes on the outside or the inside, it, it is a building issue, but particularly for the facades, that was a big project for them, and we needed the planning commission's input.
Okay. My point was, though...
Yep.
Planning commission review.
Yep.
Planning commission review for anything on the outside. Interior modifications, unless they're changing the, the overall footprint of the building, those are building department and administrative reviews, not planning commission reviews. Because I wanted to address what I thought I heard was some confusion as to why the interior renovations didn't come to play.
Exactly. That helps, I, thank you, I appreciate that. Chair, you mentioned a parking study that was done three years ago or whatever, that kind of addressed the big-picture parking issue. Would that be an appropriate future presentation in planning commission, so that we all have the same, because I, clearly I don't, I don't see the bigger picture, and if it's not appropriate for the entire planning commission, I'd be happy to, to review something outside of here, but if there would be value in doing that as part of one of our agenda items, I'd offer that as a suggestion, so.
It's, it's a public, it's a public document, it's been on our, yeah, I mean, if you want it as an agenda item, or you can just have it emailed to every commissioner to review either one.
I, I will make sure it has a dedicated spot on the, on the village website for planning and development, if it isn't already, but there are also components of that parking study that are coming into the action plan, that it will be good for, that it will be an agenda item to include those plans as reference material for your review of the action plan.
So however is the best way to handle that, just let me know if we want to do it as an agenda item, or if it would be just to my benefit, I'm okay with that, too. So just let me know what's best.
Send it to you, George.
Yeah. We'll forward it to you.
Are you here for that, Louis Alon?
Okay, any, anything else? Okay, our next regular meeting is August 5th, that'll be the first Monday in August, and I believe the last item is a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, George, for leading us.